Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Cape Cod Gateway Commission. It's being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Not seeing anybody, I'll also announce that the meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072, and it can also be accessed via the Government Access Channel, live video on-demand archives on the Town of Barnstable's website. So all of that being said, could we have a roll call?
Chairman Flores.
Here.
Vice Chairman Gill.
Here.
Clerk Wile.
Here.
Commissioner Beerworth.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner DeGeorge.
Here.
Commissioner Mayla.
Here.
And Yarmouth Representative Christine Greeley.
Here.
We have a full forum today.
Thank you, Suzanne. And I would ask all of us to rise while we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Suzanne. Can we bring the screen because you can't see it from here?
Maybe it's too far on the corner. We're moving it around to get the best angle.
Yeah.
Okay, there is no old business, but before we do get into new business, which is item number five, Sean, I want to welcome you to Cape Cod as the Assistant Manager of Cape Cod Gateway Airport. I was not here for that meeting, I think that you were here before, so I welcome you all gladly as a Floridian to Cape Cod. So you're getting used and accustomed to cold weather and snowfall.
And wet.
So with that being said, today we're meeting to review and discuss the Cape Cod Gateway Airport MVP Strategic Plan, and this is version 1.2 from 2025, and also take a first look at the dashboard. This is a result for the audience that might be watching us, a result of many nights of meetings last year, a year ago, where we met together as a community, if you will, under the leadership of our facilitator, Mark Gill, who's going to say a couple of words in a moment. It really came up with a blueprint, if you will, for what will drive who we are and what we are as we move into the future, and it gives us a guide, if you will, one that's accountable, not only to the commission but to the citizens of the Town of Barnstable and surrounding communities. Because what was interesting is that when we put out the call for folks to participate, it wasn't just Barnstable, we had folks from Yarmouth, we had folks from Balmouth, all surrounding contiguous communities. So it was a very, very well-rounded group that met. So with that being said, could I have someone make a motion to open this up to item number five?
Second.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Mark Gill, the Assistant Chairman of the Commission, to just give us an overview before we begin the discussion of what's in the strategic plan, and then we'll turn it over to Mike and to Sean to pick it up from here.
Thank you, John. So this is the MVP Strategic Planning Model. This model was actually, had its roots back in the QTP days, which I think Mike you remember, when we were trying to get the union and management of FAA to work together in a collaborative relationship rather than an adversarial relationship. And this model allowed union and management to create a vision of their future together, and it was a way that both sides would sign up to and agree to support, and then got other people in the air traffic facilities to participate in setting goals and objectives. It's evolved over time. This model's being used from Alaska to Massachusetts now, and it's highly dependent upon a good cross-sectional workgroup, people of diverse backgrounds and geographies in this case, who are willing to spend the time to actually learn the model, develop statements of mission, vision, and philosophy, and then identify goals from the vision statement. And of course, if you remember from the charrette that we had, or the charrettes that we had, the three things that you have to consider whenever you develop a goal or objective is, is this in line with our mission? Will it move us towards our vision, and does it reflect the values and beliefs of our philosophy? If you can't say all three, yes to all three, it doesn't come in. And so we had, we had about, what, 26 people, I think, that participated, and it was, it was over a series of weeks, so not only did they show up on the first night, they kept showing up. And it's really to their credit that we were able to put this model together. Once that was done, it's handed off to Mike and now Sean to come up with the actions that are going to accomplish the goals and objectives. When we handed it off to them, it had tasks in it that supported the objectives, but those tasks could change, because how you accomplish an objective, there's a lot of different ways to do it. What can't change is the objectives and the goals, because that was developed by the group. So the tasks that we handed off to you was just like kind of a placeholder or some ideas about how it could be done, but you were free to change all that. And then the big thing in any strategic plan, and John has mentioned this a couple of times, you know, they, these plans are developed, and then they are put on a shelf, and they collect dust, and it really doesn't end up changing anything. So being able to manage, execute the plan and manage it on a regular basis is the challenge, and it's where a lot of plans kind of fall off the wayside. And that's what the dashboard does, right? So the dashboard is designed to be a 30-second-at-a-glance indicator of how healthy your plan is. You can look at it, and right away you can tell which goals are in trouble and which ones aren't, and by clicking on that particular goal, it drills you down into the objectives and the tasks, so you can see where we may be falling behind and what needs to be adjusted. That's important for us as a commission, because we don't have a whole lot of time on everything else that is placed before us at these meetings, to get into the nitty-gritty of the strategic plan. That's these guys' jobs, right? And we don't want to get in their, in their way and do their job.
I want to add, that's why we're having this special meeting, because all of us as a commission took that exercise very seriously in terms of what we developed, what we designed, what we set as a structure, so not only are we holding the administration accountable, but we're holding ourselves accountable to what we stick to as we move forward, so.
So the strategic plan, it's version 1.2 now. This contains the process that we followed, a breakdown of the model and how it works, and the contributions made by the workgroup, and then finally, the actual mission, vision, philosophy, statements, goals, and objectives, and tasks and activities. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, John.
Thank you. I'll also add that this is also available on our website, so that anyone from the general public that wants to take a look at it, it's there. If they have other ideas through the administration to me, we can take that, all of that under consideration, but once again, this is a living document, if you will.
Yes.
It's not something that's just going to sit on a shelf, and we're not going to deal with it. So we need to make edits and changes, additions, deletions, as we move forward, we stand ready to do that. And we're not trying to create a situation where anything that we put on paper is insurmountable. I mean, we're reasonable, these are commons, a lot of it's common sense, if you will, but it gives us that roadmap in terms of where we want to be, so that we can measure, you know, whether we've been, whether you've been successful as well as whether we've been successful as a commission. And that's really the bottom line on this. We want to do what's in the best interest for the taxpayers and the residents of the normally possible, possible but contiguous communities on the Cape. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to, Mike, do you want to say a couple of words, and then turn it over to Sean, I believe?
Yes, please. Thank you very much for everybody attending today, and a thank you also to yourself and Vice Chair Mark Gill, and the entire commission for the opportunity to be here and separate it from a regular meeting, because it deserves its own platform to speak to, ask questions, and the like. So I really did not delve into it deeply until the last probably five or six weeks. The, as John alluded to and Mark alluded to, it was sitting on a shelf for the most part, for a myriad of reasons. And when I started to look at it and all the participants, I have to thank all of the people, because you can tell that there was a lot of hard work, and people carried out their duties with due diligence and really had some well-thought-out ideas, and it's reflected in the goals and all of the tasking that the strategic plan contains. So having said that, started to populate the dashboard a couple of weeks ago a little bit, and it's not just a document where you can just punch in some statements and some words, because we are going to be held accountable to this, and it has to be well-thought-out. So what we're doing as a team, Sue, Sean, and myself at this time, are going through and looking at the different responsibilities, because there are a lot, and they're going to be weighed by the concerns of everybody and the interests of everybody, the community, the participants here and that aren't here, because everything the airport does, I've come to find out over the last seven months, is seen by the community and by others. So news gets out fast, I was even at a event a week ago today, a wedding in New Hampshire, northern New Hampshire, and somebody started talking about the airport, and that they spent their summers down in Yarmouth, in Hyannis Park, and their grandchildren want a tour of the airport next summer. So the, no matter where I've gone over the last seven months, near and far between here and Washington DC, people talk about this airport, and so the strategic plan becomes even that much more important, because we do have to have a path, a very, and it's not going to be linear, for sure, there's, there's going to be some ups and downs, because there's a lot of challenges that go with this plan that we're facing at this time. But I'm very confident that this team will get through that, especially with the help, because we're not going to work in a vacuum, so with the help of everybody that's part of this plan. And there'll be more people as this plan grows, because there's going to be involvement of all the stakeholders, the community, and anybody that this airport touches may be involved at some point. So again, thank you all for coming here, your dedication to this effort, and I want to thank Sean and Sue for the work they've done on the presentation and behind closed doors, because I have, I pretty much handed it off a couple of weeks ago for various reasons, and so I will hand it off to Sean to be in the presentation. Thank you.
All right. And guys, thank again for the warm welcome. So as a new washershore to Cape Cod, again, my background is, is from Florida, and this community, because I've been here just over a month, I'm a, I'm a physical resident of Cape Cod, so we just closed on the house October 23rd, all right? So homeownership is fun, as a joke, because I'm finding out new stuff, but the main thing about taking this on and reaching out to the community, that everybody here on the commission has greeted me and has welcomed me with open arms, and Mike and Sue have welcomed me, and you can see it's a tight-knit community, and it's, it's more than that, it's a family, okay? Where I come from, it's hustle-bustle, you did not have that hometown feel, you have that here. And the welcome I received, I'm going to return for this effort, because the airport is here for the community, okay? And the community, it will be a part of the airport. And when we go through this process, we want to set realistic goals of stuff that can accomplish, okay? And that means working with the commission, working with the community, because everybody's opinion, okay, is valued with me, especially with this, this airport. Because if somebody has a concern, it's a valid concern, okay? And we're not going to just brush off, off a person, because we may have different viewpoints, okay? Everybody's thought process is valid, and there's always common ground, and we will do our best to explain and find a process and come up with a solution. Because to me, I don't see problems, I see opportunities. So with this, I'm also going to need your help through this process with community outreach, because I'm going to be physically going out there, meeting with the community, going to working groups, roundtables, but I also need your input to help guide me and also guide this process, because you guys will be hand-in-hand with this process. It's not just me, Mike, and Sue. It's a whole team effort, it's going to be a whole village effort, and if we do that, we set up strategic goals, this will be very successful. And again, there's going to be some challenges that we have to explain, but as a community, we will get through this and we will be transparent. We will not keep stuff behind closed doors, because that's not what we're about. We are community workers, and we're here for the community. So with that being said, if we can go, start going through this, and guys, please, if you have any questions, let us know. There might be stuff that we might have to just, I'll get back to you, but we will answer as best as we can. Okay, so the first task is, 1.1 is to expand secondary transportation services offered by the airport. Okay, what does that mean? Okay, so secondary transport system is planned to develop and pitched to transportation system stakeholders, all right? So right now, we have Cape Air, we have seasonal airlines like JetBlue and American Airlines. We have some charters, and we have Peter Pan bussers. So what are some ideas can we possibly look at? So one of the things that we are possibly entertaining and we are in talks with is, you see right in the middle, is electric passer drunks. So that could be a possible viable option for new transportation to Martha's Vineyard and Antarctica, all right? So that's one of the avenues we need. And the good thing with that is it's electric, the noise of those are very minimal, so, because we do have a concern with here with noise of pavement, but that's one avenue that we are, are looking at. Now again, we're maybe stations of that, but we are just entertaining that idea and possibly expanding services, like talking to different airlines and other corporate airlines. So those aren't, aren't talks, but nothing's set in stone. So that's one of the reasons how we are looking to expand.
We've also had some meetings with Velum, some of their folks, looking at possibly, and Mike knows about this, we had a meeting about a month ago, and hoping perhaps to bring them in, not probably 26, but count the 27 is what I was told, you know, at a subsequent meeting, that they would look to us to go from here to the Midwest as opposed to some. And that's still a work in progress, but it sort of piggybacks what you just said.
On this, on this slide, so you have the objective, which is expand secondary transportation services offered by the airport, and then you have three tasks supporting the objective, right? 1.1, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. What's above that, though, secondary transportation system plan is developed and pitched to transportation system stakeholders, that's the definition of done. It's on the, in the plan, it's called success criteria. That's how you know that you've, you've accomplished this objective. Now, it doesn't mean that we have secondary transportation systems in place, it just means that we went through the, the tasks, we developed a plan, and we pitched it to the stakeholders. And that's it, right? This is done, once that's done. If, if the stakeholders all say, well, I'm not interested, well, that's okay, but you still accomplish this objective. So just keep in mind, when you see that first, that first bullet, the way you have this structured, it is the definition of done, it's success criteria.
Any questions before we go to the next slide? Okay, it says, plan to secure new non-aviation revenue sources enveloped and presented to the airport commission for action. Okay, what does that mean? What is non-aviation revenue? All right? Does that mean it's a different airline, it's a helicopter? What basically non-aviation revenue means is kind of like all sites, so meaning like parking lots, if we lease spaces, so that's what non-aviation revenue is. So one of the things that, that we are looking to do is potentially relook at the parking, certain, the parking spaces we have here at the airport, is there a way that we could possibly expand that, look at new sources, new, new areas of where we can fill those parking lots? Because right now, if you're in the off-season, you go outside, it's a very bare parking lot. So we have real estate right now that right now is not really generating revenue. So we're going to look at ways to possibly fill that parking lot during off-season to see if we can bring more revenue. Because basically, what this means for us is we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, we want to be as diversified as much as we can and have multiple streams of revenue coming to the airport. All right? Another thing is we have the cafe right here that's only open during season. So if there's a possible way that we can get more like foot traffic to the airport, maybe that restaurant can be opened up year-round, and that's another stream of revenue. So we are looking at multiple ways of how we can make revenue here at the airport. So this is definitely going to be a involvement with the commission, proposed ideas, but we're just looking at how we can get more revenue to, to the airport, to help the airport be more successful and then help the, for the long term.
You know, probably three or four years ago, we had meetings with the folks that owned the restaurant at the Bedford Airport, and I forget the name, I think it's called Touchdown or Touchback or something like that. At any rate, it's an incredibly popular sports bar, if you will, in the city of Bedford, and we spoke with, with the owner and had hoped to bring them on board, for whatever given reason, it did come to fruition, but it was a genuine interest, and so I'm glad to hear what you said, Sean, and, and Mike relative to that, because there, there was a time when there wasn't active restaurant here at the airport years ago, but nonetheless, there's no reason we can't figure out a way to make that happen.
And that's another thing, like, if we get foot traffic, because we have a, we have a great art gallery here, so if we can shrum up more foot traffic just coming through here, okay? If you look around the airport, okay, there's a lot of space advertising, okay? So that'll be another stream of, of revenue that we are currently looking at. So, but one of the things is we got to figure out ways to get, even just foot traffic, so like you say, if we have like a restaurant or someone buy it, like, like, just an idea like we have a, like a runway cafe per se, okay, that could, is accessible for the public but also for the flying traffic, that could bring more foot traffic. And then potentially, if we have more foot traffic here at the airport, then we can open up to advertising on the walls, so that could be also another stream of revenue for the airport.
Another thing I'd like to point out, now this is objective 1.2, and we just looked at 1.1. What isn't on these slides, though, is the goal, right? So the goal for these objectives is pursue and implement opportunities for increasing profitability to promote economic stability, right? That's the goal, okay? What you're looking at now is how are we going to accomplish that goal? And then we have the objectives.
And to add, the next time you see is, it'll be more well-rounded, so like, yeah, we'll, we'll make it so it's clear, so especially for the viewing public to understand what we're talking about. This is a high-level view, once we get more, it'll be more detailed.
Max referencing page twelve of the document, if you want to. This is actually from the plan itself.
Okay, so this is another one. Now again, these are just like ideas, so establish new airlines and routes. So by entertaining, so marketing presentation pitched to these three new airline carriers. So if we could expand the airport to new markets, that, like especially during season, that just will overall help the community. So we probably pitched to like, like low-cost carriers, because a lot of the low-cost carriers, they go to all sides, like smaller markets, but again, with a smaller market, we're, it could bring more revenue, more people to the gate. And we know during season that one of the biggest things is the tourism, okay? And that will significantly help the local businesses.
I would just say, we haven't started, actually, nor myself, and Mike didn't even Veluson actually has, but now it's up to you to follow up and obviously pursue that.
Yeah, they said, this, this is reflective of the plan when it was handed off to them.
Right.
The dashboard is going to be reflective of what's actually in progress.
And if you'd like to see the dashboard in its current state, I have a copy of that with, just in case.
You're going to show it today, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Somewhere in this, is it going to reflect what is assigned to?
Yes.
So if you take a look, right now, we're on page 19. So at the top here, again, here's the goal, and then the objective 1.3, establish new airlines and routes, and there's a target start date, a target stop date, and then lead resource, the lead resource is the person who has responsibility in accomplishing the objective. Now, that doesn't mean that the lead resource, the person who is assigned this objective, is the one actually doing the work, it could be somebody else who's doing the work, but that lead resource is responsible for making sure it's getting done.
And with this, because like, again, I'm only, like, just over a month, but like again, we, we will set targets and benchmarks, because some of these like will have like an end date, however, like the community outreach, community involvement, that's going to be an ongoing process. So that's why some of the objectives will have a timestamp on it, but the overall process is going to continue going.
So this is just a basic outline of what you're looking at?
Yeah.
It's important that we have start date and end date, so, right? Because if we leave it open-ended, you never get around to it, so you, and that triggers the color coding on the dashboard.
Yes.
Because if you're, if you're, if you're on time and on target, it's going to be green. If you're falling behind, it's going to be yellow, and if you're late, it's going to be red.
And at the same time, if there are challenges, that's why we're going to present like, okay, like if we hit a roadblock, we're not going to, oh, no, we'll, we'll let you know, here is what we run into, here are the solutions. So we will always have a, a solution, or why, explain why we missed a target date, but we always have a way to follow up and accomplish that goal.
Yeah, absolutely.
1.4, evaluate infrastructure to support four-season aviation. So, so funding proposal is submitted to the Town of Barnstable, okay, so basically, 1.14 is solicit an architect or engineer firm to assess present and future needs to develop terminal redesign options, develop terminal redesign options to include up to three airlines. So basically, what that means is we are in the process of hiring an engineering firm and a, a plans consultant. And what they're going to help us do is, in the, in the future, help us determine a possible future expansion of the airport, all right? That could be multiple ways of infrastructure around the airport. So this is, and it's, I would say like it's interesting, because I mean, there's a lot of future plans, like expansion of the runway, expansion of the terminal, but we have to make sure that what we do fits the needs of the airport, because if the traffic is not there, then why are we spending millions of dollars to do something that not be beneficial? But if there's a potential of increased flights during season, then an expansion might be worthwhile, but that's where like the engineers will help evaluation, we'll present that to you guys and get the input of what direction we want to go with the airport. All right? Any questions on that? All right, now this is more my, my cup to you, okay? Develop a neighborhood.
Hold on, just a second, Sean. Before, again, before we get into the objectives, let's make clear what the goal is, all right? The goal is involve and engage community stakeholders and neighbors, parentheses, residents, and improve collaboration. That's the overall goal. These objectives you're going to see now will be taking you through how we're going to get that done. Thanks.
All right, so 2.1, develop a neighborhood president and business workgroup that meets Alright, so two point one, develop a neighborhood president and business board group that meets regularly with, okay?
Airport management.
Oh, sorry.
With the airport management.
Yeah, sorry. So, what that means to me is that's gonna be me spearheading a working group with the community. And this is where I'm gonna need your help with the local community, it's like watch groups, uh community events, alright? And I I'm a part of the community now, so that's what we're gonna be doing, is we as the airport will be going to to the community, going to local businesses, and getting people to talk about the airport and being involved in the airport business and if the airport as a community. So, this is still in this stage, because I I I'm still learning the community, but you guys have my full commitment that I will make sure that the community will be involved with this process. And then, once we have our working groups, um like one is will be like a notice payment working group and we'll develop others, then we will have a set schedule of what that's gonna be. So, we don't we don't know if that's gonna be every quarter, once a month, um but I'm sure it's gonna be varied, but we wanna set a set schedule so we can plan accordingly that if you guys want to attend, then you guys can attend, and making sure the community has ample notice if they have a concern or wanna be a part of that meeting, that they know where it is. And it could be here, it could be at at multiple locations.
And and that's that's key, what you just focused on, because you you can't make people come to your meetings, right? But what you can do is you can let them know, this is what we wanna do, solicit their interest, tell them when the first meeting's gonna be, and what the schedule will be after that, and after that, you're done with this objective. If they show up, that's great, and most likely they will. But if they don't, don't consider it a failure, right? Because you've done what you all you can do in order to get it happen.
And realize too, Sean, that, you know, we're one town, Barnstable, but we're seven unique villages. I mean, each village is very different from the other, and each village has its own representation and its own civic group, if you will. In addition, we have contiguous communities, for example, Yarmouth, Yarmouth Port, we have Hyannis Park, although not being part of Barnstable per se, they are an integral part of what happens here at the airport. So, that's a large geographic area, so you've gotta figure out who the village associations are, who the key players are, how to reach them. We can give you, most of us know most of these players, we can give you a hand doing that. Christine?
Actually, I know that there's been some talk about a five-mile radius or for working on things. Actually, it should be a ten-mile radius. I think that's more representative of the areas around the airport that need to be under consideration. So, I I think that should, and that's one of the requests actually from the town of Yarmouth, from the administration.
Just be careful with with when you start setting rings like that, because if somebody's like eleven miles, oh, I can't participate.
No, but.
Really, it's anybody in the area, right? And and I agree with you, Christine, it should not be identified. This airport serves the Cape, right?
With a gateway.
Yeah, exactly, hence the name. So, really, any anywhere in the Cape should be solicited.
But in particular, about Grittenhauer, the town administrator has stated ten, ten miles, not five, was more of his concern, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't know where the five miles came from.
It was brought up before about what they were gonna do for noise.
Five miles.
Exactly, for the roundtable.
Noise of being.
Yeah, that's that's noise, that's different than, there's there's another objective in here or goal in here about noise, so.
Yeah, but but I think that anything that you're looking at, there are some implications, because I think you're seeing concerns from a number of people in the last little while that are like, wow, you know, from the Hyannis Port, from, I mean, from various places.
Well, it was evident when evident when we began the process, I mean.
That's right.
Loads from far beyond Barnstable were here, so there was a genuine interest, so I guess what we're telling you, Sean, is that, you know, it's a it's it's a big area to care.
It's a big area.
Yeah, it's a big tent, and everybody wants to get into the tent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that in and of itself is a is a lot of work.
And one thing I I do want wanna add to this, um it's like, okay, we go through this part, and then like if two people showed up, okay, we we did our due diligence, okay? But I wanna take that step further, because I wanna send, okay, if we if whatever the topic is, I wanna reach out, okay, what do we do wrong? Did we not get the message out there? Because I know, but I I I just wanna make sure that we exhaust every effort as we reasonably can to make sure that we have community input, because I don't wanna have a meeting and and one person shows up that's not resident of the community. Like, we wanna have a good, diverse group, so we get really good input. And if it's like, well, I can't travel to the airport, okay, we'll 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 travel to you. Is there like a a town, and and that's what I mean with the community outreach. If we they can't come to us, we'll we'll go to you, okay? And and we'll set that. And that's where I wanna make sure that we exhaust everything we can, that we we wanna be proactive.
Yeah.
Okay?
Just because you've accomplished the objective doesn't mean you can't do anymore.
Yeah.
You can continue to do better, right? This is just to make sure that we get the foundational stuff taken care of.
Yeah, and the only other comment I will make, there will be some issues and concerns that only one or two people will have an interest, and you have to deal with that. There will be other concerns and interests where you will have an overflow crowd.
Yeah.
We can predict what those will be.
It's possible.
Alright, so, two point two, enhance communication using variety of media, print and non-print. So, basically, what we're looking to do is Twitter, AKA X, use Instagram, Facebook, and in the past, we advertised on Mid-Cape Magazine. So, we wanna make sure that we have multiple streams of media, print and non-print, to make sure we get the um the information about Cape Cod Airport out to the public. So, again, like, use these forums, um actually, I didn't put it up there, but we had a very good uh Mid-Cape advertise, I believe we took a full-page advertisement last time, so that's something we we could look at. So, it's not just it's not just radio, it's not just, we have multiple uh ways of like getting advertising out there for the airport now, so.
I was gonna suggest, I think the newspaper subscriptions are just declining so much. I mean, I don't see newspapers being delivered in my neighborhood anymore, and so I think as a consequence, looking at, you know, a whole variety of things is gonna be very, very important.
Yeah.
Because quite often, the town things are sort of just advertised in a print, and you don't see it.
Very few people get the Cape Cod Times.
That's right.
Not the Barnstable Patriot in a printed form anymore. Most of the line will get a digital.
That's right, exactly. That's what I think would be important.
I mean, the Cape Cod Times really isn't a local paper anymore.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a national paper.
Yeah.
We don't really have a local paper, except the Patriot that comes out on Friday, which you're just reading the news that came, you already know what's in that paper.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I think you have to consider is what has happened since COVID, and the demographics on Cape Cod and how that has changed. We have, at least in the area where I live, we have a lot of people who came down that all of a sudden are living on Cape Cod, that have very little to do with Cape Cod. They work remotely, and they they may not even have students in the public school system, they know very little about town government, they they read the Boston Globe or the Arrow, they watch whatever they watch. So, we have to be very cognizant of those people, because they do have an interest in what happens here. And I I think the rules of the game and part of the challenge here is that things have changed so much.
And to add to that, we're a headline-reading society, that they'll read the headline and then not not read the substance. So, that's why like when we advertise or we promote, we have to be very target-oriented of how we're gonna get them to to read the article, they're like, oh, like Cape Cod, or like, we wanna be like very specific and have an eye-catching phrase to making sure that someone will take the time to read the paragraph or the two paragraphs, because.
We should create our own AI page, because the days of even reading are fast becoming unprecedented. I mean, pretty much ask ChatGPT anything, tell me something, and it'll tell you, I did it several times, it'll tell you anything you want.
I I can tell you, though, I can tell you, though, you do Google searching, and first what comes up is the AI summary.
Yeah.
Um, I'm doing a lot of research on a project right now, and nine times out of ten, that AI summary is completely wrong. So, I have I have no.
It asks.
And 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 to that point, you're absolutely right, because I typed in Boozy Gray's quarterback, and it came out Tom Brady, so.
That's not true.
It was AI.
Yeah, because he's quarterback right now, he's retired. So, yeah, it's wrong. But but in the print media with newspapers, I've heard the mention of the couple of Barnstable newspapers, we gotta keep in mind, this is the Cape's airport, right? Let's not limit ourselves to Barnstable, so you have the Sandwich Enterprise, there's a lot of other, you know, McDonald's has one, Robbins Dock has one, just make sure that we're, yeah, yeah.
How which?
Yep.
Any more questions? Any more questions on this? Alright, let's do the next one. Okay, so this is develop new methods to communicate and solicit feedback. So, like with my open statement, we are here for the community. Everybody has an opinion, everybody's opinion is valid. So, one of the ways we're looking at is, again, like, we're talking about doing roundtables, have a possible email portal um that people can, if they have a concern about about the airport they're right to, and like, yeah, maybe do like a newsletter that go out in email or print version, like, yeah, we can discuss that, and just give community updates, this is what's going on with the the airport. So, that's what we're kind of looking to do for the community involvement, because we wanna have a way that the community has a voice and they can address their concern with us. Alright, so, um, two point four, establish community liaisons for interest groups. So, this goes back to um again, like identifying the concerns and interests of the airport, and then, once we get that established, maybe have like a liaison that can communicate for the group towards the airport. And one of the reasons that will be beneficial for the airport is it will help streamline information that we can get to concerns um through one medium, meaning that if we have, if there's something that fifty people have an opinion, if we have the working group that they can consolidate, okay, here here are our concerns, and one or two people can communicate with with the airport and the commission, then I I think it'll be more effective than having fifty different opinions, because we have fifty different opinions, and that's fifty other things we gotta address. So, that's why we wanna be effective of how we address concerns. We want we wanna address people's concerns, but if we can manage and migrate some of those ideas together, I think that'll be overall more effective and have positive impact for the airport and also the community.
I don't mean to be chatty, but if you recall, the last couple of commission meetings, I think it was Paul Harkness from um Hyannis Park, asked about the idea of having somebody be a representative as opposed to multiple people in terms of issues and concerns, so I think, you know, that might be.
That was a noise complaint.
Yeah, noise, but but I think that I think that the idea, that is sort of that idea of sort of what you're talking about, too, that may be helpful to have that.
And I think we're talking about liaisons from the airport.
Yeah, yeah.
Not not.
Okay.
Community.
Okay, not community, okay, okay. But I think that, you know, having an individual here even then, that could then work so that somebody knows who they could contact if they had an issue or something to talk about, it'd be good, not just necessarily at a commission meeting. Sorry, can I shut up after this?
Okay, and again, like I said, it's it's gonna develop and stuff, so, alright, and then, so, again, that's pretty much it, but I I put that out there because, again, this is gonna be a community, and I think this is a good representative of the process, vision, the teamwork, community outreach, get everybody working together to keep this plan moving forward. And I can think, alright.
Excuse me, I was trying to juggle a few things this afternoon and didn't juggle successfully, so I pushed pushed the limits of time. So, I'll just load it. But this is a good example of the portability of the strategic plan also, so.
Is that?
Chinese characters?
Yeah, it comes up every once in a while.
Who you really work with?
We've been infiltrating.
That's updating. I'm saying MIT come down.
That's definitely Chinese.
Where does that barcode go?
Lost control of the barcode.
I don't think so. The king just got our strategic plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Invitation, you know what they say, right?
Yeah.
That's more flattering, yeah.
So, I might have to do my uh my white thing again.
While Mike is getting ready, we're basically taking a look at the first two goals, and I think there's eight or nine goals.
Eight, did they total?
Yeah, it was in total.
So, we'll see that.
It's a pretty comprehensive document, but I'm sure that we're gonna see some additional.
Is is that in the bottom? It's already there? The Excel spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Can you go to full screen?
One of these, I'm getting cataract surgery soon, so will not need to do this.
Okay, that's that's definitely not it. There we go. And then, we need to return to the dashboard. Okay? So, this is the dashboard, okay? At a glance, you can see, there's a lot of red up there.
It's a change.
Yeah. And yeah, so, once you start putting dates in, this is this is actually gonna change, but but let's pick one that you've actually started doing work on.
Alright.
There you go, so you click on it, and it drills down into what you see in the actual plan.
And it'll be actually easier to look from here. So, yeah, some dates have been loaded, as you see.
Yeah.
And what Mark was talking about before, the goal is right at the top of the page. Okay, so here, pursue and implement opportunities for increasing profitability and promote economic stability. And so, if we can, let's see, I'm not gonna move anything else. So, put a goal of or start date of January sixth, twenty twenty six up here, and lead resource, I put myself up there, but because we have not, or I haven't done anything there, it's been status zero percent. Just have January sixth, hopefully, we will start, or we will start on that initiative and start moving. Next objective, to identify new non-revenue aviation revenue, I should say, which Sean alluded to, actually started back in July. That was something that I decided that between Sue and her team's work, that it had already been begun, and right now, we have a little bit of advertising revenue due to some, an ad that's gonna go up within the next couple of months on the terminal walls. So, when put in arbitrary dates and arbitrary progression, we're up to five percent, and unfortunately, the screen is split, but advertising additional land leases, terminal parking, increased utilization is where we're at right now. Oh, great, thank you. It's easier on that little. So, as you see in the column, it's in progress, and it's not red technically, it's on time, because we've populated some dates in here. And so, that's a that's a happy point for me right now. Establish new airlines and routes. So, October tenth, twenty twenty five, that's when we had the meeting with Avello and brought them in. Marketing presentation was pitched, so we've already had one pitch, but I only put ten percent, fifteen percent in there, just because.
Sounds like 33% to me, one out of three, right?
Yes, if I go by the criteria, yes.
Right, give yourself credit when you, when you actually have a call.
But, but John and you brought that, or John brought that person in, so.
Oh, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. Because I go halfway. But now, we have JSX and if I go here and say, as of, I've been talking to them and this is where you can see where it's relatively easy, 9:30, 25. Actually started talking to them there through 11:13, 25. So in that conversation has been, they're interested in possibly being a Part 121 operation, so a non-scheduled charter during the summer from Hyannis to Tijuaro and vice versa. So we actually are engaged with two, sent them a presentation yesterday similar to the Avello presentation and they actually wanted to do a site visit, so for more information. So we are moving along there and. And then evaluate infrastructure to support four-season aviation. It has started just mostly talking and now with the planning engineer or planning consultant coming aboard, that'll have to move forward because it's also in our CIP discussions, capital improvement plan for this fiscal year coming up. And with the infrastructure we currently have and the, specifically the runways, the terminal, things like that, there will definitely have to be some real serious efforts made going forward to really analyze if this structure and our airport can support that traffic. When we talked to Avello a few weeks ago, they fly Boeing 737s. Our airport really isn't configured for 737s because of the lack of runway length. They can configure a 737, but not for going out to probably the Midwest and beyond or beyond the Carolinas. So that's something that's gonna really have to be planned for and really framed appropriately for the community, for Cape Cod and for the town. And presentations. So very infant, 2%, but it is, again, on time. And then we go back, so we navigate in status, sorry, not started, one of this goal. And in progress, three, and complete, unfortunately, it's a zero right now.
Yeah, it's okay. I would only add that, you know, as we look at these different objectives, if we go through the process of working through an objective and it comes out that nothing happens from it, it doesn't mean that it was not successful.
Right, yes.
It just means that it wasn't the right time, the right place, even the conversations we're having with other airlines. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Right.
It just means that we're in the process of conversing, we're figuring it out, we're seeing if, if there's a match.
Yeah.
If there's something that we can make happen. If it works, it worked. If it doesn't, we tried.
Yes. And that's part of the learning curve for me to.
Sure.
Yeah.
So and then just hit the dashboard button.
I guess what I'm saying, don't think, we can't be successful 100% of the time.
Yes.
So it's not a failure if we have something on there that doesn't happen, so don't take it personal.
No, it's not personal, it's just personal wiring. So as you see, a lot of red in the late because.
The dates haven't been added.
The dates haven't been added to the last six of goals, all right? So on time, we have those couple that have been added. And in progress, yellow, not started, is in the blue. So if you want to go to goal number two, improve collaboration, have populated some dates in there and given some assistant manager responsibilities over there, thank you, Sean. I think there's also one for Sue in there somewhere also, but it's relatively easy to navigate once you've spent a little time in it.
Sure.
And start putting things up, I think, yeah. So I think copied what Sean had said about the use X, Instagram, Facebook and mid-Cape marketing over here. And again, you have your metrics over here of what's been started, what isn't started. So it's a real nice way to see an overview, more granular. And for the commission, as we were talking about before, it's just an overview. It's a quick snapshot of, hey, this is where we're at, okay? And then the questions can evolve from there. And as you see, the navigation through each goal is relatively easy to, especially once you start getting, diving into it, figuring out where we're at, why we're not, where we want to be, or as John just said, you know, technically, you know, we might be 67% of the way towards one of our goals already, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
Correct. So it's a, it's a, it's a great tool, sometimes fun because I like spreadsheets, but it wouldn't show that using the way I've been navigating this today. Questions?
I'd like to make a recommendation that the dashboard is a standing agenda item on the monthly board commission meetings.
Yep.
We don't have to spend a whole lot of time on it, but just by taking a look at that, the dashboard itself, if anybody has concerns, we can always drill down, but just so that we have a continuous awareness of our progress going forward.
Sure.
I would also recommend that, and I'm not sure how you're handling it within your team, but do you have weekly meetings with your team?
Not yet. Everything's still been so scattered. Now Sean has had weekly, daily meetings with the ops and R people and I've been slow to get to that point. We had some in the spring and then just kind of tapered off.
Sure, it may help, like, this is, this is a carryover for me. You probably did it too when you were at Bonc's, but on Monday mornings, you have a meeting with your team, right? And you have to talk about this is what we're gonna go after this week, right? And, and a portion of that meeting would be the strategic plan. You know, a quick review, can we update it? Is there anything that we, we can throw in here? What have we done? Have we updated, whatever? And if you do that on a, on a weekly basis, now it's like everybody has the vibe and their fingers in it and their.
If you make an important, Michael and Sean, you make an important, so then it becomes important to the other employees in the airport.
Yeah.
Once again, if you don't talk about it, you know, it becomes a maybe and a what-if as opposed to an expectation. And that's what we really need to do is to make this a regular expectation. It's a great idea putting it on, you know, it's just a quick update on a monthly basis so that we're in the loop also.
Yes.
And in the monthly airport commission meeting, when we look at this, that project highlights box is a great venue just to throw some bullets up there that you want us to be aware of, that may prevent us from, even wanting to go drilling down on it.
Yeah.
The fact is, we spend a lot of time on this, so we want to, we want to make it work. We want to figure it out and, you know, it's always a work in process, though.
Yeah.
The thing is, is that we're serious about it, as you can tell. Which is why I wanted to have a separate meeting for it. I didn't want to bury it in the middle of a regular commission meeting because the time and energy that all of the residents of the community and the surrounding towns spent on it. A lot of, a lot of nights.
Yes.
Will the commission members be able to monitor this directly, have access to this to monitor it or?
So the, the only way, the way it's set up right now is I would have to send it out to everybody individually. It's because it, because it is a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't have the mechanism to make it so that you can continuously just, you know, it's four in the morning, you get up and, oh, look at that, so.
Well, actually, we could, we could put it on our website, right?
Yeah, you could put it on the website, but it would only, it would, it would possibly have some latency to it, so.
Whatever the, yeah, whatever the recent version is, you click on the link, the thing opens up and it would be read-only, no.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah, on the website.
No, we would just, I would just create a PDF of it and gotta put it on the website.
Well, I don't know if the links will work in the PDF.
Yeah.
Um, no, for the website though.
You can't, you can't search a PDF on a website, though.
Yeah, you really want to put the.
We'll find the format.
Put the spreadsheet.
Yeah, the Excel.
Because people are gonna want to drill down and take a look at it, right?
Okay, so, yeah, with our website, it not show up the functionality.
It's a file that you put on the server where the website is.
Yep.
And on the page, you put a link.
Okay.
View our, view our strategic plan dashboard.
Yeah.
Click on that and it'll open up the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I often talk to Pierce Cote about.
Yeah, yeah, it's not hard.
Because I, we don't go into it, they do.
Monthly, yeah.
Sure enough.
Yes.
Exactly. That's why we're consultants.
Okay, any other comments, questions that you? Well, generally, I would just bring this to. Thank you for everybody for coming down and being engaged and listening.
And I, and, excuse me, John, Sean, anytime, day or night, you want to give me a call if you're not sure about anything or what would be a better way to do anything or anything like that. I'll, I'll be your MVP strategic coach.
So, so, so just to let you know, in South Florida, it's sunset, so like right now about like seven o'clock. So here, setting at four o'clock, I've been going to bed at like eight o'clock, getting up at three, so if you're like four AM.
I have, I have customers in Alaska, so.
But I, I, again, I will take you up on it and I greatly appreciate it because like any help I can get, it's just gonna help this whole process.
Normally, this plan would have been developed with you guys here.
Yeah.
But you weren't here and if you had been, I think it would have been easier for you to move into it.
But we're here now.
Yes, you are.
We're gonna take this on full.
Yep.
You're here now and we're gonna hold you accountable.
We're gonna hold you accountable for what we did.
With that being said, with that being said, I just want to recognize a couple of people in the audience. First, our liaison, the town council, Betty Luckey Dunn, thank you for coming this evening. Liz Igoe, who was a member of the AMH Board of Slaymen. I know you represent Hyannis Park.
Not anymore.
Oh, not anymore? Oh, okay. Well, you're here taking good notes.
No, I'm here to represent Hyannis, PPOS, community working group.
Oh, okay, right, okay. And we'll be having a public media in January on that.
Yes.
Yes, of course, a public media.
And finally, Neil, Neil, would you introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Neil Sullivan, I'm the director of the Aviation Maintenance Technology Program at, for Cape Cod Community College.
Oh, you know, it's funny, I serve as a trustee at Cape Cod Community College and if you ever want to see a crackerjack program, go up to Plymouth Memorial Airport and you'll see, you know, 200 young men and women taking classes, taking courses, getting certified ultimately as an FAA certified mechanic after two years with the free, with the free education program that we now have in the state. Someone graduating from my school can go to that two-year program. At the end, if they pass the FAA test, they'll start anywhere for $100,000 or the $20,000, $10,000 signing bonus. I mean, Neil can attest to this and work anywhere around the world. And think about it, when you're 20, 21 years old, I mean, you've got a hundred grand on the table going in and when you're 21, you work a hundred hours anyway. I mean, it's just the way it is. And you can make another hundred grand. It's, it's an incredible opportunity. At the same time, we've begun to talk with folks about an air traffic control opportunity. And Neil and I have had a couple of conversations because of the incredible shortage of air traffic controllers across the country. I'm trying to figure out how we as Cape Cod Gateway Airport can work with the college to basically implement the program. I had a couple of brief conversations with Mark and with Michael on it and, you know, we've gotten hold on this. So we're gonna be coming up and saying hello and figuring this out because both Mike and Mark are veteran air traffic controllers of many, many years, you know, up in down the East Coast. So it's something we can talk about. So thank you for coming.
Absolutely. There's also electric aviation because that's huge, that's, that's here, you know, next year. And there's a whole, just the whole airframe and power plant ramifications of how you maintain them and. Not to mention training those pilots.
But that's all part of the program that Cape Cod Community tells, whether it's gas power or whether it's electric power.
It's, it's huge and it's, you know, first quarter, I think one of the vendors is live in Dubai, so.
My son's, my younger son's friend does A and P through a program like that. And he's working for one of the FBOs up at Bradley. And when one of their customers, their jets have a problem, he jumps on a business jet and they fly him to, I mean, all over the world. Sometimes there isn't a problem, they just want him on board in case there is a problem, they have a mechanic right there. And, and I mean, he started doing this when he was in his early twenties, right? And then the FAA recently brought back a program that they had before. It's a college training initiative where if a college meets the requirements for this program, it'll be a sanctioned program by FAA, which means if you graduate from this program, the FAA will hire you as an air traffic controller.
That's what we're trying, we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
But I still, I, I just found it amazing, this maintenance program, these, the job opportunities that these young kids have at 20 years of age. And they've got a career for the rest of their lives, anywhere they want, with a signing bonus. It just amazes me.
Jonathan, I just want to, want to support their 244 students.
244, okay.
Next semester, we'll be offering all of the general education requirements for associate's degree onsite implement so our students can go from start to finish without ever leaving our facility.
Well, that's great. And for anybody watching or anybody here, you know, on the dais, you know, we're, we're at Gate 7 at Memorial, at Plymouth Memorial, all the way down the end with the last group of hangars way down on the corner, kind of on our own turf. And it's a great opportunity, just going to see these kids working.
Sure.
Not only, I mean, we've got the planes that were donated by, by Cape Air. I mean, it's set up, it's, I mean, we should do a field trip there. It's that impressive and it really is a cool opportunity. All right, not to belabor this, Chris?
Yeah, can we ask, I know, you know, with the recent crisis that's been going on with the air traffic controls, have we had a problem here at this airport about the coverage or has it worked okay?
No, these are, these are contract controllers.
Yes.
Okay.
So they're, they're not, they're not AA controllers.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael, thank you, Sean, Suzanne for being put on this. I guess what's left for today's meeting, any other announcements from any of the commissioners up on the dais? Anybody have anything to say or want to add to this discussion?
Sure.
Just wanted to add that we have our lovely Toys for Tots sleigh out here with the Grinch. And he should work mechanically. If you step on the button out there, he kind of dances and sings.
And how long is that going to be? I heard someone talking outside, what else come in? I wonder how long this is gonna run.
December 5.
December 5?
I think so, and then they do the collection. So send everyone in, it's a great photo opportunity and a good avenue for these kids that, you know, are not.
Okay, before we adjourn, our next meeting is scheduled for December 16, here, December 16. There will not be a regular commission meeting this month. There was not enough really firm gender, so we will have our next one, as I've already said, on 12/16/2025, 4:00 PM here. And with that being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment, so.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
And those, that is a vote, this meeting is over and I want to thank everybody for coming and have a wonderful weekend.